It is 6:15. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. A quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and a notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. In a moment, I would ask that you stand with me as we say our pledges to the U.S. flag and Texas flag. But in that moment, that we're going to have a moment of silence, I would ask that you lift up the Rhodes family. Let us remember Bailey Rhodes, our fourth grade student who passed away from Sparta Elementary. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer or meditation. flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one nation under God. Thank you all so much for joining us. It says that we're going to start public comments first. However, comma, we have so many deserving students here tonight, we're just going to start with recognitions. Is that okay with everybody? A simple mass wave is good. Okay, cool. We will start with recognitions. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees. It is a distinct honor to be before you tonight, getting to recognize students. It's been a few months, so we're back. First up, we have our National History Day Senior Website winner. Mr. Floor, if you'll proceed. In the National History Day competition held virtually this summer, Belton New Tech High School at Wasco student Aditi Bot took the top prize in the nation for her senior individual website. The first Belton ISD student to ever finish first at the national competition, Aditi's project called Deeds Not Words, The Suffragettes, Women Breaking Barriers, advanced through three levels of competition to claim this national title. Congratulations, Aditi. Janet Lee, if I'd like to go? For this next recognition, it's important to first say that while our classrooms may have sat empty last spring during the extended COVID-19 building closure, this next long group of students are proof that learning did not stop in Belton ISD. And the incredible commitment that these students and teachers demonstrated makes this annual recognition that much more meaningful this year. We're about to recognize our Advanced Placement Scholars. It's a pretty significant group, so parents, we're going to, I'm going to just keep reading through names, and we're going to proceed with taking pictures as we go. This year, the College Board is honoring 114 Belton ISD high school students as AP Scholars. These awards are given to students for college-level achievement as demonstrated by their performance on AP exams. The awards are divided into four categories: AP Scholars, AP Scholars with Honors, AP Scholars with Distinction, and National AP Scholars. This year, 114 students from Belton High School and Belton New Tech earned a total of 125 distinctions nationally based on their scores. As I read the names of students earning each of these distinctions, we'll be taking small group photos to the left of the stage. All AP Scholars will be able to pick up their certificates following the conclusion of recognitions in the lobby. First group. The following students received scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams, qualifying them as AP Scholars. Vanessa Ake, Madam Thagerly, Annie Bailey, Emma Baker, Jackson Belabradic, Drew Biava, Madeline Bradshaw, Jacob Bronze, Joy Brent, Avery Timothy Clark, Kaylee Combest, L. Corsi, Abigail Davis, Emma Day, Stephen Ellis, Rhett England, Alex Florrie, Samuel Foreman, Carla Freus, Felice Galette, Isaac Gish, Anthony Gruyon, Rexton Harrison, Donna Telehoti, Simon Howe, Tyler Ward, Skylar Jarnigan, Michael Jones, Ryan Jones, Abby Carter, Joseph Knox, Thea Lancaster, Grace Linart, Piper McGowan, Haley Medina, Gwyneth Maher, Brendel O'Bannon, Shivangi Oja, Kendall Olson, Micah Page, Chase Perry, Jenna Lee Fang, Grace Poole, Luke Reed, Ethan Rodriguez, Caroline Rowe, Gwyneth Saxenmeyer, Natalie Scammell, Brady Shadrick, Jacob Sinkwich, Christian Thames, Jonathan Thompson, Toni Turner, Ethan Wong, and Micah Zychek. Please join me in congratulating these outstanding AP Scholars. The next group of following students received an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams, qualifying them as AP Scholars with honors. Mr. Alcoz, if you'll join us? In this group, we have Colton Baird, Benjamin Broome, Ryan Carpio Brown, Miranda Davila, Nathan Fife, Nicholas Garcia, Austin Kruger, Benjamin Lamont, Ekin Malik, Caroline Mullenbrock, Carol Paletti, Christian Rogers, Shannon Snow, Nick Sullivan, Evan Taylor, Luke Thomas, Madeline Vacula, Kalen Vergara, Julia Wagner, and Cade Winberg. Please join me in congratulating these impressive AP Scholars with honors. In our next group, this is a group of students who received an average score of at least a 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams, qualifying them as AP Scholars with Distinction. First up, Sylvia Assuncheon Crabbe, Doy Baker, Dean Biava, Joshua Bledsoe, Mitchell Bonner, Bridget Burdine, Nicholas Sepola, Madison Farwell, Molly Feldner, Grace Fathergill, Emily Freemeyer, Guatim Gamande, Kobe Gillens, Gabriella Hansen, Francesca Higgins, Keryan Hoosh, Emma Howard, Sydney Hunt, Jabbar Nino Yubara, Jonah Jimenez, Alexis Care, Caitlin Coons, Tyler McDonald, Angela Medina, Kylan Menipace, Elizabeth Montezuma Manza, Kyra Moore, Denise Ina Rambanta, Arien Oja, Emily Olson, Jamie Pearson, Brooklyn Pyle, Jackson Rom, Sonia Ronsom, Ethan Taylor, Gayatri Therakkar, Daniel Torres Rivera, Zane Williams, and Yuni Wu. Congratulations to these impressive AP Scholars with Distinction. In the final group, the final distinction that the College Board awards, we have a group of students that were recognized as National AP Scholars for receiving an average score of at least four on all exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. And I'm so excited that we have one of these students, most of them are graduates, but we have Guatim Gamande here with us tonight. Thank you, Guatim, for being with us. Just to put it in perspective, that's again, Guatim received a score of at least a four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of those tests. So congratulations. Our next recognition is for a Texas 4-H Council President. In what has been reported as a historical first for Bell County, Texas, 4-H members elected Belton High School senior Luke Reed as this year's president. Luke, who ran against 29 other candidates for the position, will represent not only the state level of the organization, but District Eight and Bell County as well. And Luke was also a part of the AP Scholars' recognition, too. And our final recognition this evening is special to many of us here in Belton ISD because it's a staff member that we're relying pretty heavily on right now. At a banquet held late last month, Belton ISD's Director of Health Services, Charlotte Smith, was recognized for her dedicated service and partnership with the Temple Founder Lions Club. For the past five years, their partnership has offered important eye-screening services to children in Belton ISD and beyond, as Charlotte has served as an advisor and an advocate for those screening services expanding into other districts in this area. For everything that Charlotte is doing now and for what she has been doing in the past, we appreciate you, Charlotte.
We'll let our families head on home, and thank you all for being here tonight. We're about kids here in Belton ISD, and boy, isn't it great to actually recognize these families to get our board meeting kicked off. So thank you, students and families, and we appreciate you being here tonight.
Feels like old times. It's awesome. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comments. Do we have anyone signed up? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to have any item pulled? It is on. It is. Should I just stand here with a megaphone? The next item is consent agenda. Does any board member wish to have any item pulled? Is there a motion to approve as presented? That's Mr. Tyus Haggard. Is there a second? Dr. Rose Montgomery. All in favor, please raise your hand. That is every one of us. Thank you so much. I love these adaptable times. You just adapt and move on, right? So we're moving on to number five, action items. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance adopting the tax rate for the 2021 school year.
Madam President, members of the Board, Ms. Land is here tonight to present to you our information regarding tax rate for the upcoming year.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustee members, and Dr. Smith. I am here tonight to ask you to approve the proposed tax rate that we've set forth. We have proposed a maintenance and operations rate of 96.83 cents, and that represents a 10-cent decrease of our last year's rate for the M&amp;O portion of the tax. We are proposing to maintain the debt service tax rate of 39.68 cents for a total tax rate of $136.51. Compare it to last year's $146.51 rate. That is a 6.8% decrease and a 10-cent overall reduction in our tax rate. There is language that is required in this motion because our tax rate will raise more tax revenue than last year because of an increase in property tax values. The proposed tax rate is expected to increase the total levy to just over $56 million, and with an anticipated 98% tax collection rate, that would bring our estimated revenue to about 50, a little over $55 million, which is about a $3 million increase and 5.3% total increase in tax revenue. I want to also remind you that simply because we have an increase in total tax revenue, that does not represent necessarily an increase in the amount of money that will be coming into the district, because when we couple it with state aid, there is an offset on our state aid side. So our revenue per student remains relatively the same.
Any comments, questions, discussion regarding that? Is there a motion to approve as presented? Mr. Norwood, would you read the motion, please?
I will read the motion, and then I'll, well, before I read the motion, I'm going to reiterate what she said. Because of the way the motion reads, for those of you who don't come to this meeting every year, you wouldn't know it, so I'll just put it out there. The motion is going to read that we are increasing taxes, but as you heard by the numbers, the tax rate is actually going down. I've been doing this now, I think, five years. I still don't understand why we do it the way we do it, but the state says this is the way you will read it. So when I'm quoted in the newspaper as saying that we're increasing the tax rate, we are not increasing it, that's just the way the motion has to read. So, in saying that, a motion stating, I didn't need to read that part, did I? Okay. "I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.3651 cents", which is effectively a 0.61% increase in the tax rate.
Is there a second? Mr. Haggard, all in favor, please raise your hand. That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Next item is regarding the employment of administrative employees.
And we're inviting Todd Schiller, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, up to make that announcement for this month.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we have one recommendation, and that is for Kristy Blatner, for Assistant Principal at Leon Heights Elementary. Kristy has a master's degree in education from Texas A&amp;M University, Central Texas, and a bachelor's of arts degree from the California Lutheran University, and she's got 15 years in public education, all of those years with Belton ISD, and we look forward to working with her in this capacity.
Thank you. Is there a comment, Board? Is there a motion to approve as presented? Dr. Montgomery, is there a second? Janet Lee, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item would be our Policy Committee Report. That's going to be the, Mr. Alcoz. Yes, you're up.
Thank you, Madam President. Policy Committee Meeting was held on September the 14th, 2020, along with myself. It was attended by Dr. Montgomery, Chris Floor, Dr. Smith, and various members of his administrative staff. We started out the meeting by having Mr. Morgan present to us the numbers regarding the intra and intra-transfer policy and how it was effective during this particular school year. If my colleagues on the Board will recall, we adopted that policy change in the fall of last year. And we were all wondering, you know, how's this thing going to affect folks? Because it's really of a sensitive nature when people want to go to a particular school, perhaps a legacy reason or some other reason. So we weren't sure how that was going to impact the transfers within the school district. Well, the good news is, and based upon Mr. Morgan's report, it worked beautifully. So I want to commend Mr. Morgan and the members of his team in drafting that policy. I know it came to us, but it pretty much came to us, it was, work was already done, so we just simply approved it. Might have made a couple of changes here or there, but it worked basically the way it was intended to work. So, Mr. Morgan, thank you for that. Most of our meeting was spent upon the Policy Update 115. Policy Update 115 contained the updates that were not in 114, and a lot of the updates that were promulgated by the changes that the legislature made. Also attending the meeting with us was Holly Wardell, Council for the District. And one of the questions that I asked Holly before we got started is, when we look at these policies, there are always, there's always a bunch of letters in front of them. For example, the intra-district transfer policy, FDA local, FDB local. So I asked Holly, I said, would you kind of give us a rundown on what these letters mean when we see a policy like that? And you don't really appreciate that until you look at the vast volume of policies that this district has, and I guess most school districts. So I'm just going to go through the letters and tell you what they mean, just in general terms. So if you see this letter in one of these policies, this is kind of what it's touching upon. For example, A is addressing the basic district foundation, for example, geographic boundaries, which is something that we dealt with whenever we were opening the new school. We dealt with that quite a bit, quite a bit during that time period. B, that addresses local governance. For example, the setting up of committees, like the Policy Committee Meeting and the Facilities Committee Meeting, officers duties, the Board's relationship with our superintendent. C, when you see the letter C in there, it's usually addressing purchasing, transactions between the district and its vendors, real estate transactions, purchase of technology, those kinds of things. D, which is something that Mr. Schiller deals with a lot, deals with personnel, hiring, firing, conflicts of interest, those kinds of things. Now, I'm giving you these examples, but that's not exhaustive. I mean, there's other things that these letters may address, but I'm just kind of giving you in general terms. E, curriculum instruction, for example, special ed students, grading policy, which is something that we dealt with here recently, and class rank, which is another very sensitive subject. So if you see an E in there, then we're talking about class rank, for example. F, that deals with students, admissions, transfers, discipline, those kinds of things. And then G deals with PTOs, community relations, how the district deals with other entities within the district. So Holly gave us, they gave us that rundown. The other thing I want you to know is that these policy updates, a lot of times, are really, really extensive. So to digest all that, it's difficult enough for each board member to digest that. It's a little bit better if it's digested by the administrative staff, and that's exactly what they did. So the way they presented it to us, if you look in your agenda packet on page 165, the administrative team provided us with the name of the policy, or the policy designation, the title. For example, the very first one is AF Legal. Title was Innovation Districts. The leader responsible was Dr. Golden. And the revisions, there's a short discussion about that. The impact on existing practice, in other words, how it's going to impact our district, that was none. And the next steps, none. So in this particular graph, or not graph, but spreadsheet that they provided us, it tells us which leader is responsible for which particular provision was changed for whatever reason. Dr. Love Smith was responsible for quite a few, of course, Dr. Golden, Ms. Land, Ms. Cox, Mr. Schiller was responsible for many of those. Of course, Mr. Morgan is on here. So each administrator that dealt with the changes is also responsible for making sure that the steps, if there's any steps that are needed to be taken within the district are taken. The next thing that was provided to us was an instruction sheet, and it was on, it's on page 172 of your packet, and this comes from Tasby. Tasby does, is a tremendous player when these updates, when these updates come out. And, you know, especially with the legal, the legal policies and the, not only legal, but also the local policies. So if we have a local policy, that policy is sent to Tasby, and Tasby tells us, hey, you're in, you're in good shape, or no, you need to change this or change that. The legal policies, there's really not any discretion there. I mean, those have to be in compliance with state, federal law, regulatory law, Texas Register, Federal Register. So lots of, lots of things come into place whenever you have a change in the law. The Supreme Court could come down with a landmark decision, and there's going to be a policy update, because it's going to affect every school district in the state of Texas. So when you have those kinds of things, Tasby is a big player in that and kind of keeps us on track. Not only Tasby, of course, our Council for the District is also involved in that. So what we're trying to do is make sure that everything that we do is in compliance with state, federal, and regulatory provisions of the state of Texas and the federal system. So the way that it was presented to us, we felt very confident that we're on top of things. In terms of any changes, we really didn't make any changes other than there were, and I think in the harassment policy, we changed, in terms of reporting, we changed the word from immediately to promptly. We changed that in two, in two locations. And then in another provision, in response to what Dr. Montgomery brought up, we added that it applied to a foster care child also. It was, it was in there, but not quite as clear as we wanted, so we went ahead and added that. So those are the three changes that we made with respect to the Policy 115 update. Other than that, I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory. Obviously, we've already adopted that, so this is our second reading, and I think that pretty much sums it up.
So Facilities Meeting, we met on the 16th, and in this meeting, we hadn't met the month before, you know, obviously with the shutdowns and things like that, it was best to just give everybody a meeting off. But in this meeting, I think the thing that we have to grasp during this closure, this partial coming back, this shutdown at different times, while all this stuff is going on in our communities, in our district, our country, our world, people are still building houses. They've not slowed down. Actually, they're building more houses at a faster rate, and that means we have more kids, and we're going to need to upgrade facilities and build more facilities. And that is really now what we're starting to focus on for the next couple of years. So basically, what the meeting was about is, we've been getting reports from different departments around the district, CTE, athletics, this time Fine Arts came in and made a presentation, and we'll start talking about that stuff once we get a comprehensive list put together. I think the main thing that we came out of the meeting was, was David Bennett and the guys, our people, have basically read this list out. It is amazing. We're 77% finished with the three and a half million dollar list that we approved last year. I was telling them it was, I'm so spoiled, the first meeting, we got to be on the committee, we got to spend that money and do so many cool things. But the blessing that we have in Belton with David Bennett and his folks is that they do so many of these projects in-house, that of that 3.5 million that we projected, after we've completed that list, and we still have some on the list that aren't completed because of COVID and some different things, we're going to have about $846,000 left from that list of money left to spend. And that money isn't tied legally like some of our other monies are. We can get in there and get after a couple of things and make a couple of things happen. So that was one of the things that was really cool to find out, wow, we've got, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars left from that list. And it's because of David and those folks that are doing such a good job of being able to do so many of these things in-house. I can't say enough what those folks mean to us. So that was a big part of the meeting. The second thing is, is that we're going to have some money left over from investment, from the bonds that we, that the public, so our stakeholders so graciously approved three years ago. We invested a lot of that money. We didn't spend it all at one time. So over that time, hopefully I'm explaining this correctly, Jennifer, but we've invested it with our people, and we're going to have about $4.6 or so million that we can spend. Now, that money is going to be tied more to legal things, what we can and can't spend it on. It can't go in the, pay for certain things, but it can do facilities, it can do some technology, some of that kind of stuff, right? So we've got some money there. We're still waiting on a few things to come in, like always. We got, we were still waiting on a couple of things, but we're going to have some money to spend pretty quick on some things. So I think that another, another main theme, and I'm going to be done here pretty quick, another main theme is, is that we understand in Belton, because of the massive growth, we're one of 75 fast-growth districts, that we have a lot of newness in our district. But we don't want to forget about But we don't want to forget about the opportunity that we are obligated to give every single child, every single student in our district. So I, hopefully, when we start getting a list compiled, a more accurate list, we can devote a lot of opportunity monies to some areas. We know some of our buildings are going to be older than others, but that doesn't mean we can't upgrade those buildings and give those kids the same opportunities that some of the newer buildings have. And that's, I'd like to see that be our focus, is to equal some opportunities around our district with some of this five or so, you know, five and a half million dollars that we've got. And then Mike Morgan, who's, who's over this now, we've done some restructuring in downtown, and he's over this part of our district. I think tonight is the night we're going to make, we're going to have an action item, is that right? Are we going to pick the committee? You're going to make a recommendation?
Y'all already approved it in the consent agenda.
It was, that's right, it was in consent. So we did that. So we've narrowed it down to a group that he feels comfortable working with to put that together, and they're going to go and do, kind of like what Robin did when she first got here, go, I mean, door to door and looking at all 130-something facilities that we have, and looking at future things. And they're going to point this, they're going to give us point totals on need, based on our criteria, and that'll help us when we start coming together as a board to start approving some of this stuff. That'll help us identify the needs that we have upfront and prioritize those things. So basically, the main, the main theme of the meeting was, we have some monies because of our people and some smart investing by our financial folks. We have needs, they're never going away, they're there in front of us every day, and we have to start refining. Part of that list that Mike's going to put together with his people isn't just things we can fix now, but we've got to start looking a couple of years down the road at a bond. And in today's climate, we have to really be smart in putting together our next bond approach because of the equality and the opportunity that we want to provide for all of our students. We have to really make sure that we present a good bond to the people, and that's really, that's going to be half of what Mike's doing, is that long-term stuff and the big-ticket items, but then we've got an opportunity to make a difference pretty quickly with the other things. And I think that's, that pretty much sums it up. Jeff? Is that good?
That's good.
Thank you, Ty, I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Mr. Alcoa.
Hey, Ty, when is this, as far as getting this committee together and then making a recommendation to you guys as to what needs to be looked at sooner than later? What's the timetable on that?
Did you say, like, hoping to have it together by next March?
Yeah, the proposed timeline is that we will have our facilities assessment completed at the end of February. We would take the first kind of viewing of that data would be in the Facilities Committee meeting on February, oh, not March 10th, I believe, and then at the March Board meeting, we would have a full report for the full board on what we found and the next steps in the process.
I think it's really important to point that out, too. This is a third party coming in that specializes in this, so that construction score, that facility index, I think is a better way to put it, that's going to give us some real detailed information, not only on how our buildings look, we all get a sense of how they look when we walk in or how they feel when we walk in, but from an expert opinion, some of the structural needs that we're going to have to make these facilities great for our kids. So we're really excited to get that work kicked off. Thank you, Ty, for bringing that up.
And one of the things, too, and Matt brought this up in our meeting the other day, is it's kind of like having a car. You know, while you're driving your car, you still need the oil change, you still need the new tires, you still need a new battery every couple of years. Well, we still have to budget some monies for new roofs at some of our campuses, air conditioners that might go out, cooling systems are very expensive. So we also have to think about those things, just regular maintenance needs, repaving certain parking lots at a time, so, but that's what this, this is going to do for us with Mike and his folks, and so that's pretty much what we did.
Thank you, Mr. Taggart, for that. It's always good news when we just confirm what we already know. We're doing great stewards with the public's money and the community's money and keeping kids at the center of all of that. Next up, we'll have our Athletics Department report.
I'm inviting Sam Skidmore to join us up here. It's my understanding that each year we've done an Athletics Department report, and we've often done it in the summertime. Obviously, we had a few other things going on in the summertime this year, so Sam's been patient with us and is here to present some information to you on this. I also want to point out that this is also a part of that goal, too, that we talk about, exceptional student learning experiences. Athletics play a big role in student lives, and we're excited to have Sam talk a little bit about those programs tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I'll see if I can work this, all right. All right, I'm here tonight to provide an overview of BSD Athletics for the 2020-21 school year and celebrate the accomplishments of the 1920 school year. As you know, we had COVID happen, and we didn't get to quite celebrate some of the accomplishments we normally do with some of our seniors and some of our groups, so we'd like to mention those kids today. Like Dr. Smith said, we're focusing on Goal Two, sorry, exceptional, ensure exceptional learning experiences for each and every student. Athletics is working to meet the needs of each and every student by providing quality and competitive programs in a variety of sports while also growing a service mindset in our students. I'm not having any better luck. This is our preliminary athletic period enrollment data. BHS total enrollment was 2,351 at the time this was taken. We had about 32% participation in athletics through that student population. This does not take into account multi-sport athletes, which we have a lot of, but they were at 32%. Belton New Tech is at 12% athletic participation, a combined participation of 28%, which equates about 800 kids participating in athletics through Belton New Tech and Belton High School. Lake Belton High School is at 45% participation rate with a number of about 405 students participating in athletics. And so with that, with those, with that data combined, we're at about 1,200 students at the high school level participating in athletics throughout our district. Our offerings, we offer 20 different sport options for kids to participate with Boys and Girls Athletics. One of the things we really focus on is multi-sport athletes and multi-activity participation. We kind of pride ourselves, and Coach Morgan started this, and it's been kind of an echo of mine, is we want kids to be well-rounded individuals, and the way, the way they're well-rounded individuals, them being allowed to participate in multiple things, whether it's band and athletics, CTE and athletics, multiple sports, and we really work really hard, our coaches do a great job of working those kids because we want to grow well-rounded individuals. We try to develop young men for, young men and women for life, working to mold those individuals and mold their character. So those are some of our offerings. One of the big, big things we're focused on this year is vertical alignment. Whenever you open a second high school, key is to get the, the schools in that feeder pattern aligned, sixth grade up, and we, Coach Morgan and some guys have got sixth-grade preathletes going in our district, but it's crucial for our coaches to be down in the middle school, making sure at the seventh-grade level, they're hearing the same terminology the high school coach is saying. And sixth-grade preathletes, they're hearing that same terminology, and they're building on it year after year after year. So by the time they're 12th graders, they're at the pinnacle of their athletic prowess because they've been taught the same thing, they're running the same offense and defense, they're hearing the same terminology, they're not trying to learn something new when they get to high school. So we can continue to build on that knowledge and that background. Giving back to our community, I can't take any credit for this, Coach Morgan did a great job of instilling a community mindset in our athletic programs. One thing we require all of our high school programs to do is do one community service project. Most of them go above and beyond that, and some of them get up to 12 community service projects, because we want to build that servant leadership mindset. We want to create servant, a servant mentality, and we really wanted to give back to the community that gives so much to us, whether it's support, whether it's when we fundraise. Our community does so much for our athletic programs, we want to give back. 1920 celebrations, we had 67 Academic All-State Awards, 62 total student athletes received those Academic All-State Awards. We have five student athletes received awards for multiple sports. The Athletic Wall of Honor ceremony was canceled in the spring due to COVID, so we rolled those four that are, of our Wall of Honor, which were Avery Drake, Kaylee Robinson, Denver Holman, Lynette Franklin, over to this next year. We've also added two through soccer that will add on, so we'll have six inductees to the Wall of Honor. We had 24 student athletes sign a letter of intent to go participate in college athletics, and we're very proud of those kids. They worked really hard for those accomplishments, and our coaches do a great job of getting our kids on to the next level. A little touchy, sorry. One of the changes I want to kind of just briefly talk about are UIL districts. We've always been used to Belton High School being a 6A district, we're there in the same district for everything. A change is, when you get below the 6A level, you'll have a high school in multiple districts. For instance, Lake Belton High School is in four different districts. They're in one district for volleyball, cross-country, basketball, baseball, softball, golf. They're in another district for soccer. They're in a 5A district for swim, because 4A doesn't have swim, so it's a little change. They're going to have multiple, multiple different districts. It's not going to be as uniform as Belton High School. I just want to make you all aware of that change, it's a little different for people around here. I wanted to emphasize our BSD strength coaches and our trainers. Mr. Schiller helped, worked really hard with us to make sure we were able to hire, a big trend that's going on in state is to hire certified strength and conditioning specialists to work with our kids from sixth grade all the way through 12th grade. They're always available for all sports. They're working the kids out, they have the knowledge, they're certified, they have a knowledge base that I don't have, that coaches don't have, because that's what they focus on, to give our cool, our kids the tools to be successful. So we got to hire two strength coaches that programmed the sixth-grade preathletics weight training, and it all goes back to that vertical alignment, where they're building off the terminology from sixth grade and the technique, so we can hit them at their peak when they're, when they're 12th graders. We also added two athletic trainers, so we have two high school athletic trainers at both campuses, plus two middle school athletic trainers. The biggest point on this with the middle school trainers is, either before or after school, every day, at every middle school, there's an opportunity for kids to get treatment and get seen by a trainer, which is, was just changed, but that, that's a big selling point. A lot of people aren't fortunate enough to have that, and that gives our kids an opportunity to get back on the playing field and get seen by an athletic trainer. I just wanted to go over, we adopted the BSD Athletics Clear Back policy. We took this policy committee back in, I think it was March, and just wanted to reiterate to that, it's been going well so far, but it's just to ensure our patron safety, ensure our participant safety at our outdoor venues, and this was Phase Two, following graduation implementation, implement of the Clear Back policy. Want to touch on our COVID-19 mitigation strategies. One of our points of emphasis that we tried to keep in the forefront as we went this, we wanted to have our kids an opportunity to compete. So we tried to, tried to work really hard on implementing our COVID mitigation strategies, and our coaches were the first ones on the front line this summer, and they did a great job with the changing protocol and trying to make sure we're doing things the right way when we're, when we're handling equipment and spacing our kids that, and they really did a phenomenal job. I was very, very proud of our coaches this summer. But when coming up with these strategies and ticket sales, we wanted to make sure that the first point of emphasis was try to get as many parents able to see their kids participate, perform as possible. That was our first priority. Our second priority was our students, being able, them to come watch their classmates participate or perform. And the third was general public. So we went alternating rows at all our venues, we went prepackaged food and drink in concession stands. I know some people were disappointed because they couldn't get nachos last Thursday night, but we felt that was best during these times to have prepackaged food. We kept capacity under 50%. We moved all our middle school volleyball and football games to the high school, once again, to try to allow as many parents to see their kids participate as possible. Face covering is required for all that, who are able. Athletes have their own water bottle, and last Thursday was our first home game with Lake Belton, and we put the bands in the, behind the end zone spaced out in chairs six feet apart and staggered, so they weren't blowing their instruments over top of each other. So we'll continue to change as UIL changes their guidelines and do our best job as possible to keep our kids an opportunity to play and participate, because we know a lot of lessons they learn through these exceptional experiences, their life lessons, and as part of the student growth and experience is athletics, fine arts, CTE, all the other programs that go along with academics. So I'll open it up for any questions anyone might have.
Would you have any questions, Mr. Flor?
Just, just really comment, on the vertical integration front, I got to say, I've been so impressed with what I've seen going on this year so far with the vertical integration. I've got a Bronco at the middle school level and a Bronco at the high school level, but, you know, both playing. And, you know, whether it's the integration between the varsity teams and the JV teams and the freshman teams, or whether it's the integration between the high schools and the middle schools, they're wearing it out. I mean, the, the high school coaches are participating with the middle school tryouts, you know, and like I said, like amongst all the levels at the high schools, I mean, they're, what they're doing is building, right? I mean, they're building, they're getting ready to build dynasties, right, for on both sides, right? You know, we'll have a Tiger dynasty, we'll have a Bronco dynasty, and, and, I mean, it's just amazing to watch what's going on in the level of involvement with those coaches, both sides of the house, right, north side, south side. It's just great. So thank you for everything you guys are doing to, to push that.
Appreciate it. Our coaches have done a really great job of getting down the middle schools, and I have to say, our coaching staff, from top to bottom, some of the best around the state, and we have great coaches that really care a lot about kids, and they're doing a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Taggart.
Just a couple of things, having a child last spring, Magic Bell, and it just all got canceled and that was taken away, I understand how important this is for you guys to make sure our kids are getting an opportunity to participate. We had 900-plus kids work out all summer. We had, what, two? Two cases, they brought it with them after we did the contact tracing. That means our coaches are doing their job, Coach Sniff and Coach Coak. That means our kids are doing their job to not put themselves in bad situations. So congratulations to our athletes that are out there taking care of business when they're not at the field. So your mitigation things are working, that's, that's impressive. And from a facility standpoint, the vision that these guys have, Coach Patrick, Ty underneath you, and the head coaches, and Morgan passing the baton to this young guy who's doing a great job, but they redid our press box. Tim Waits from Temple Telegram mentioned in a tweet this week about how it was just so amazing, the changes we made in our press box, took some extra monies that they didn't spend last semester on transportation and some of those type of things. If y'all haven't been up at the, at Belton High School, he wrapped a bunch of windows and walls and repainted the gym, things like that. So it's that focus, that laser focus on our kids. Hey, we're even consolidating the color red again. We're bringing back old school, what number is it, 80 something?
Pantone 185C is.
185C, I hear all the time. So we're bringing it back, we're lining it all up, the colors, the mascots are lined up, the rebranding of everything. So there's so much that he didn't mention because he's, he's humble, he doesn't like bragging, but they're doing such a great job in our athletic program of, in athletics, any extracurricular, if your kid's involved in anything, the video game team, if we had one, we just want our kids being involved, and what they're doing in athletics through this time, I just want to brag on you guys, the leadership we had before you and what you and Ty Patrick are doing, hey, man, y'all are killing it, just doing a great job.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ty. Anyone else? Yep, I will tell you, it's exciting. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, Coach, I just want to thank you for the great job that you're doing for our kids and staying on top of things. Well, it's got to be a tremendous chore to put these mitigation strategies in place and stay on top of that, so thank you for doing that.
I appreciate it. I have, I have a great staff, and our campus coordinators are doing a great job, and our trainers, from top to bottom, custodians, they're all pitching in, and no one says that's not my job, and they're all, they're all bought in for our kids to have a chance to participate. And so I got to say, this, this summer, if it wasn't for Charlotte Smith, we would have been, we'd been in trouble, but I just wanted to give her a shout out. She was a big help to us, and she continually is.
Well, it certainly takes a team to make the dream work. Teamwork makes the dream work. You know, all of these things combined, all of these reports, talking about students and all of these, you know, sort of the different awards that we've done tonight and facilities and policies, this feels like a normal time, in this unprecedented time, and all the negative things that are going on in the world, right here in little, little Belton, Texas, we're doing it right, and I'm so proud of us, I'm going to brag on all of us. So thank you all for doing a great, fabulous job. Amazing. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
All right, Superintendent's report.
I know. We're going to, we're going to talk about the order of these presentations in the future. I don't know. I'm struggling with this one. Couple of things real quick as they're pulling up the report for tonight. I want to say, this isn't part of the presentation, but I just want to say, reiterate kind of what Ty said, athletics was on the front line, along with our fine arts, through opening schools over the summertime, and they didn't get a lot of credit about things, but they dealt with a lot of, a lot of management of how we're going to get kids in for great opportunities, but how are we also going to make sure that parents are here and they're able to be supportive of their kids? Our number one goal that we talked about the whole time was be able to get kids participating and keep fans in the stands. And so I'm thankful to our community for being patient with us. Nobody likes wearing our masks, but we're doing it for kids, because we want kids on the field, and we want fans in the stands. So thank you all for, for participating and, and bearing with us as we move through things. Next slide, please. So as you all know, Superintendent Report is my time to provide you all with a few administrative details on what's going on in Belton ISD. Next slide. Couple of observations as we got things kicked off. First of all, the values that our principals articulated back in the spring to me, when I asked them, I specifically asked them, what are the values that are going to lead us through? us through challenging times here in Belton ISD? Clarity, kindness, unity, and purpose. I feel like I see those values being upheld and lived out day to day in our schools. As I've toured each and every school in our, in our system so far, I see these things playing out, from the work that the teachers are doing with parents, the clarity that they're trying to provide the parents on what they're supposed to be doing with their kids each and every day, to the kindness. We have frustrated families right now. There, this is unprecedented times, but our staff is approaching these things with kindness and, and goodness in their heart, and we're doing it in a way that brings people in as partners rather than push them away. And that unity and purpose, as Suzanne mentioned just a few minutes ago, I hope you felt it, I felt it tonight, everything that we're doing is about kids, and I feel it right now, and I feel it when I visit our schools. I also feel the big red community coming out in droves to support our kids. It's amazing, as you see, as I, I talked to Ben Smith about volleyball at Belton High School the other night when I was watching some volleyball, and Ben said, honestly, we got more people here than we had last year at this time. Like, people just want to see kids in action right now, and we're feeling the big red community support at Lake Belton High School and at Belton High School in, at all of our schools in between, so we're thankful for that. Student and family pride in schools, I mentioned a little bit about. I don't know who is more excited on the first day of school, the parents or the kids, but the parents were super excited, and so were the kids as they were walking into our schools, and a lot of that really just humbled me, because they were so excited to see their teachers and their staff and to get back to learning. They have pride in the schools here in Belton ISD, and I'm proud to say that. Finally, I, I, as I mentioned about athletics, I'm just amazed at our students and our staff and their willingness to work through all of these tough circumstances to try and make sure we're keeping kids in school and teachers in the classroom. I walked into a pre-K classroom last week, I think it was, and it's amazing how well four-year-olds wear a mask, and it just said something to me, because we had a lot of doubts about things along the way, but if we can keep more kids in school face-to-face that want to be in school by, by kids being able to wear a mask, then we're doing it, and I'm, I'm so proud of their efforts to do it. Again, I know it's a pain, I have mine off while I'm talking right now, but I'm so proud of what I'm seeing in these classrooms for adopting these mitigation strategies and just trying to, to get about school on a daily basis. Couple of numbers updates for y'all from Clint, everybody knows Clint. As of today, 9/21, we have 12,500 students enrolled in Belton ISD. That is 320 more students from this exact same day last year. So, we are growing. When, when the comment was made earlier about houses are still being built, people are still moving in, we are still growing here in Belton ISD, pandemic or not, we're excited to say that. 71.6% of our students are at-school learners right now, and 28.4% of our students are at-home learners. To Ty's question earlier, we're doing our best to work with families to try and make sure we're meeting their needs. We want kids in the right environment, but we're also having to manage some things administratively in teaching. We gotta have the right number of teachers to actually teach the students that are coming face-to-face. So, I'm proud of the work that our principals are doing. They're taking it on a case-by-case basis right now with the families, doing their best to meet student needs and making sure that each and one of our students feels valued in all of it. So, thank you to those principals. Couple of other notes on this, 935 students are enrolled at Lake Belton High School. I think that's a few more than we had originally planned, but that doesn't mean that Belton High School is a small school. I believe we're over 2,300 students still at Belton High School enrolled. So, y'all did a great job in opening up that second high school this year, because we needed it. We really needed it. Also, sometimes forgotten, Belton Middle School opened up. We're back to four, we're back to another middle school, in up to four middle schools in Belton ISD, and we have 735 students enrolled at Belton Middle School. We will have an opportunity to celebrate that school as well. It's not a brand-new building to dedicate, but it is an opportunity to celebrate that school this fall. Finally, just a reminder to everybody, we actually have 19 campuses serving students. We have our schools, we have BECS, but we also have our DAEP program, and it's important to recognize all of the programs that we have throughout our system as they're serving our students. Next slide. I'm going to bring Dr. Golden up. She's going to talk to you a little bit about our next steps. Ty asked this question earlier, October 5th, after this four-week transition plan, what's coming next? We're going to move to Scenario Three on October 5th, and I'm going to let Dr. Golden talk us through this.
Good evening. As you know, we opened school under Scenario Four, and although we had been planning for all scenarios, Scenario Four, we felt was important during those first four weeks. And so, we've been talking about masks this evening, and we opened with students and staff wearing masks. We opened in a hybrid schedule for our high school, so we had high school students attending face-to-face two days a week and at-home learning three days, and our elementary, pre-K, and middle school students were coming four days a week. And as we've talked about earlier this evening, Wednesdays was time for our teachers to really have the opportunity to continue to build on the learning that happened over the summer, so that we could provide those exceptional learning experiences for students, whether in a face-to-face environment or an at-home learning environment, or a combination of those environments. And so, we are now based on the feedback that we've been receiving and really working in close partnership with Bell County Health Authorities and seeing that the numbers are actually trending down. We are proposing this evening to open under Scenario Three beginning October 5th. And so, just a reminder, within Scenario Three, while face-to-face five days a week, we still will be requiring masks or face coverings for our students and our staff. We're still going to continue the robust cleaning protocols and mitigation strategies that we've put in place with Scenario Four. We'll be limiting large group gatherings, just like we have been, but in Scenario Three, our students will be coming to school five days a week, with of course, the exception of students that are still selecting at-home learning. One thing I'd like to point out, we will be transitioning away from that Wednesday, where it's an entire day of professional learning support for our teachers and at-home learning, to a one-hour early dismissal on Wednesdays. If you recall, this summer, we sent a survey out to our community to see what support we would have for providing some time for our teachers, understanding that teaching is different than it was when I was a teacher, that our teachers will still be navigating face-to-face, they'll still be navigating at-home learners and intermittent learners should a student have to go home due to close contact or a positive COVID case. And so, with that, we're just here this evening to announce we'll be opening under Scenario Three October 5th.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ty.
Regarding, my daughter was asking, are we going to still stay with the AB schedule when we go back to Scenario?
Yes.
When we move up to Scenario Three, is it still going to be?
Yes.
A block schedule?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for asking that question and, and clarifying that. In an AB block schedule, that reduces the number of passing periods our students will be in, in hallways, and, and Dr. Smith just mentioned the number of students at Belton High School, for example, so reducing that transition is going to be important. So, we will be doing an AB schedule. But, it won't be where they're at home, three days at-home learning and two days. It will be five days a week alternating AB day.
Is Wednesday, that, that swing day, or they go to all, all classes, or how does that, how does that block work?
We are still planning on doing A-day, B-day, every single day. It just, just keep rolling. Yes. Yes.
Are there other questions? I have a question. Two-part question. One is, for those that are, that have chosen to be at-home learners during this time, is it at this point, they can now choose to come back October 5th for in-person learning?
Yes, and we had put in our response planning that when we, when a parent made a decision for their student, that if they could stick with that decision for a marking period, a grading period, a nine-week period, would be ideal for students, just so there's not this constant back and forth. But, as we said earlier this evening, there are special circumstances in which we have, we are going to do what's right for our students, and there were circumstances where, even within the first couple of days of schools, parents said, well, I selected at-home learning, you can have them back, and we need you to have them back, either because, you know, work circumstances change, things changed at home, and so, we've been working to accommodate those special circumstances. But, for a lot of our parents waiting for that marking period before making that decision, for a lot of students is, is a better situation.
So, if parents want to choose the option of going one way or the other, do they need to go ahead and make that request now to their campus, or how, how does that information get transmitted to the public so that they would have that information to make that healthy decision for their child?
Well, and after this evening, I know we'll be updating our community after this board meeting on Scenario Three, but also, our campus principals have done a really good job of communicating with their, where, with their individual communities and letting them know process, if, if someone wanted to change, whether at-home or face-to-face, and, and move to a different mode, they can send an email to their campus and to their campus registrar. That campus registrar works with the campus to make the necessary steps. Again, encouraging waiting for that marking period, but if there are special circumstances, we've been working to accommodate those.
Okay. So, in essence, in a nutshell, what this actually does is for those who were at-home three days a week and, and those kinds of things, now they'll have the full five-day-a-week option with a one-hour earlier, early dismissal on Wednesday, but if you were at-home already, then you would just stay at home, unless of course, you had a special situation where you wanted to request and come back and be an in-person learner?
Correct.
Okay. I have to break that down in my mind. It's like, okay, I got it. I got it.
Can I, can I ask? I know you can't see me, Suzanne, I'm sorry, I can't.
Please speak up.
I saw you, Janet, I saw.
Can I ask, on the one-hour early dismissal, as we move into Scenario Three, do we have a timeframe? Is that going to be all year? Yes, we are planning on doing that throughout the year, because we anticipate we will have at-home learners for this entire school year, and so, we're going to be updating the district's website with a calendar that shows the specific Wednesdays that there would be a one-hour early dismissal. It, it's not going to be every single Wednesday, and here's an example. When we have a week where there is already a professional learning day built into that week, where students are at home that day, we're not also doing an early release on Wednesday. So, that's the only exception. And again, we'll put that calendar out, so it's very clear the dates that we would be impacted by that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Next slide, please. Oh, sorry.
So, we've been working with Bell County Public Health on some of these things, and you know, this plan was approved by them. I would say this, the, the data points that they have been monitoring along the way have shifted slightly as they've learned more, and so, it makes it a little tricky for us to say exactly what data points. I would say this, as we continue to have students come back face-to-face, so we have fewer at-home learners, and as we continue to see our numbers decrease regarding COVID cases in our community, we would hope that we would be able to get back to Scenario Two as soon as possible. What I, I will be really blunt on this as a superintendent, I have a hard time believing that I can go back to Scenario Two before flu season hits and between, before all these colds and everything come. My number one goal in all this is to keep kids safe and get them in our schools, and so, we have to be able to have the right mitigation strategies and safety precautions to do that. So, I have a hard time believing that we will get back to Scenario Two anytime before flu season and, and the cold season really gets through this year. But, as always, we will work with Bell County Public Health, use their guidance, use guidance from our state and national organizations, and make the best recommendation to you all for our kids.
Did you have a question? Okay. I had one other question, and this may not be the right moment, but as far as those positive things that we've already had, what's the, the scenario for them coming back to, to campus? What needs to happen first?
Yeah, that varies by case, and so, I hate to give you this answer, but I'm going to give you this answer. It does vary by case and family situation. So, what happens when we have students or staff members that report positive scenarios for COVID, that they work with our, our health department, Charlotte Smith is over here, she then works with Bell County Public Health and tells them exactly the scenario that's at hand, and we go off the recommendation from Bell County Public Health as far as how long that person should be out for, and they work with Charlotte to go through the close contact tracing and to see who else might be affected and might have to be at home for a given period of time.
Okay. So, they would just do a self-quarantine? There would be no requirement for a negative COVID test before they came back then?
So, it, some of it depends on the scenario. Charlotte, do you want to come up and, and talk a little bit? Welcome, come on up to the podium if you want to give a little detail, because Charlotte's probably sitting there cringing going, I don't know what that superintendent's going to say right now, so. Charlotte, come on up to the podium if you would for a minute.
Appreciate you being here and answering those particular questions. I know that those are questions that are out there in the community, and they would just be happy to hear them, hear the responses to it.
So, if we start with a positive, there's going to be two kinds of situations. One that we know is lab confirmed, and there's no doubt from the kind of test that it is. The other will be a possible, but we're going to treat those the same at, at the start, because we want to confine the spread. So, they give us three options on that one. If somebody's positive, well, I'm sorry, on, on the positive, on the positive, they give us one action, that is, that they'll need to be out for the 10 days. They want the symptoms to be better, and as long as they have met the criteria of the 10 days and the symptoms are improved, then they can come back. The tricky one is those that present with symptoms, and so, we are doing our best to not exclude unnecessarily, but at the same time, trying to be careful. So, when someone presents with symptoms, if they don't have any health condition that might be causing that, asthma, allergies, they ran 20, you know, three miles the night before, and they might be a little dehydrated, we look into all those things, and if it looks like there's a possible COVID, then they've got, those are the three options. They can go get a clearance from their doctor, they can get a negative test, and then, or they can wait the 10 days. Most people are going to want to go ahead and see their doctor, which is what we recommend. The, the hard situations are when you have a positive case and you're a family member that lives with that positive case, because the infection period can be, you may be infected up at the beginning of the case or at the end of the case. So, those family members have to wait until 14 days after their last exposure to the family member. So, let me give you an example. A mom has two secondary students, but she has a, a three-year-old. Mom is positive. Mom can't separate herself very well from that three-year-old, so that three-year-old won't be able to come back to BECS until 14 days after mom is cleared after 10 days, so that's 24 days. The secondary students, if they can separate themselves and eat different parts of the house, then they're able to just be out the 14 days. But, to me, that's the toughest situation when you're a family member living with somebody with, with a positive COVID.
That was very helpful. Comments, questions?
I told you, she'd say it better than I would, so.
She did an excellent job.
She did.
Thank you so much.
Next slide, please. So, this next one, we're going to dive into. Dr. Golden's going to come on up, and we're going to talk a little bit about, real briefly, the timeline. We wanted to make sure you, as board members, know what's coming up regarding Goal One in developing our portrait of a graduate or journey of a graduate. Next slide.
Okay, so I'm super excited about this topic. So, we have our, our journey, our own journey for developing the journey of a graduate, broken into three phases. We are entering the preparation phase, where we will be working with an organization called Batel for Kids, who's going to provide some consulting support for us. They have done this work in districts across the state and across the nation in helping us establish really what our project charter is, our timeline, really start to identify dates where we're going to begin to really engage our community in a very thoughtful conversation around what we want this journey of a graduate to be in Belton. And so, we will begin that in September, this month. We will begin engaging our stakeholders, internal and external stakeholders, on their hopes and dreams for their students, their children. That work will begin in October. We will go through several opportunities for that. It will be, there will be some virtual meetings, surveys, thought exchange opportunities. Really want to make sure that we engage all voices in our community into this incredibly important work. Through this, these committee meetings and through this work, we hope to be back talking with you in December during a workshop and be to the point where we're presenting a draft of where we are in that development process in hopes that in January, in a regular board meeting, we'll do a presentation where you'll be able to consider and hopefully approve what that journey of a graduate will look like. And so, this is our draft timeline that we will begin the work as early as tomorrow in engaging with our, the consultants that are gonna work with us and start looking at dates, and we'll begin with communications advertising those dates.
We also wanted to point out that you all will be involved along the way. We will do our best not to add more meetings, although it might be fun. We will do our best not to add more meetings to you, but engage you in ways that you are able to influence and share your voice regarding our hopes and dreams for student in Belton ISD as trustees. So, please be on the lookout for additional communication and invitations coming to you all as well. Next slide, please. March 17th, we passed a resolution, and we said that we would report out to you anytime we had actions pertaining to that resolution. We don't have any to report out this month, I'm proud to say. Next one. Finally, some notes for the board. Usually around this time of the year, we come to you with class-size waivers, and we will be coming to you with class-size waivers. We are monitoring those situations. TEA has extended the deadline for class-size waivers, and so we anticipate bringing those to you in October. As you can imagine, it's a little bit tough sorting some of that out when you have families coming back and forth maybe from virtual learning experience to a face-to-face learning experience, so we wanted to make sure our numbers were good numbers for you before we brought them to you, and so I would anticipate those coming to you in October. As we mentioned earlier, and as I'm proud to say, Charlotte is not only in constant communication with Bell County Public Health District, but she's a leader for them. I think they rely on Charlotte often for some of their information and for good thought partnering. And I'm proud to say that there are nurses are gonna be working with Bell County Public Health this week, picking their brain and continuing to learn from our local health authorities. We plan to have a small gathering coming up for the Lake Belton High School dedication. I wanted to very specifically call that out. I think you all have been invited to that small gathering for the dedication, but I also wanted to point out, we are not ignoring the fact that we want our public to see that building as well. We are planning some kind of public engagement days, whether we call them taxpayer days or public days or whatever they might be, so our public can see that facility even if they don't have kids attending. We know that that was a vote by our public to actually help us build that school, and we wanna get people in there and see that beautiful school that's built for our kids. And so, we will have additional dates and information coming out so that our general public can see that facility as well. Teacher support, we've mentioned quite a few times. I would ask y'all just to make sure that we are constantly thanking our teachers for their work that's going on right now. It's almost like asking a football coach to coach a game and telling them they have to play with a soccer ball. That's kind of what we're doing right now in the middle of teaching. We are changing the game for teachers on a day-to-day basis, and it's important for us to thank our teachers and do whatever we can to make sure that they know how much we appreciate what they're doing for our kids. Next month, we'll have a board workshop coming up. Holly Wardell, our legal counsel for the school district, will be working with us in the workshop in October. And finally, we have the Sixth Street office. There was quite a bit of work that was done, and our facilities committee, I think, toured over there a couple of times in the spring, if I'm not mistaken. We're excited to say we're having some bodies actually move in there coming up. We slowed down because we had to get school open for our kids. We had to focus, make that the number-one priority, but we're gonna have some of our staff moving over there in the near future. Our tech team did an amazing job. We hired some additional help for a help desk as we opened school, and they were housed over there temporarily, but we will have our permanent staff moving over there in the near future. And that concludes the superintendent's report this month.
Well, thank you. So, which staff is moving over there?
Our special education department, and they're working through who exactly will be all over there, but they, that was been the plan the whole time, and we're continuing to move forward with that plan.
Awesome. That's great. Okay. So, before we convene for closed session, I will tell you that we will step away for closed session, and when we come back, we don't anticipate taking any action at all, but we are going to close now. It is 7:29. We're going to convene in closed section, session, Texas Government Code, Sub-Chapters D and E to discuss safety audit, Texas Government Code, Section 551.076. If the board will go out this door here that says exit, we'll walk over to the learning lounge for our closed session. We are so closed. So closed. We're leaving now. 8:18, we will reconvene in open session. Board, do you all have any requests, new information or reports? Mr. Flor.
Sorry. I've always gotta have something, I guess. So, I forgot to ask earlier, because during the workshop, like, I didn't realize we're done. There were a couple bonus slides that we saw, whatever. So, just my only ask would be like, for any of those presentations we saw during the workshop, so whether it be special ed or CTE, whatever, like, if there's, if there's something that those departments or those groups like need from us, like specifically, like asking the question, "Hey, look, is there something policy-related? Is there, you know," you come up with a wish list, like, come up with asks. The worst we can say is no, right, but what can we do to help them further? And some of this, I think, will shake out with journey of a graduate and things like that, but, but just specifically asking when, you know, we have somebody come in, you know, maybe that's a question that we specifically want to hear them address to us going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? We're all good? All good, huddled and cuddled? All right. So, let's talk about upcoming events. On Wednesday, we have the Lake Belton High School Stakeholders Dedication at 5:30. Y'all have the same little list in front of you that I have. Also, we'll point out that on Wednesday at noon, I believe, the registration will open up, so you can do your schedule if you're going to do the virtual TSB. So, I'll be looking forward to that, and that virtual convention is going to be September 30th through October 2nd, and our next regular board meeting will be here, October the 19th. Other than that, again, you'll have the list before you. Is there anything else? Ty looks like he's ready to run, so before he leaves. Alrighty, y'all. It is 8:20, and we are adjourned for the evening. Thank y'all so much.